That will be picked up by the microphones. I did go back and listen to parts of yesterday's meeting and you can actually hear Councilmember Evans heard you chuckling over there, so no jokes allowed during our work sessions. But seriously, the viewing audience will be able to hear anything that you are saying. You all so please be very mindful of that. We're going to go ahead and get started. We have the final version of our wish list. I know that there are some new requests, so we're going to pick up where we left off yesterday and then we will circle back to get those new requests. So we're going to start on page 20 with the planning department. The first item we have is Councilmember Evans. The first item is Councilmember Evans, fund the creation of the Nashville Community Housing Fund for $540,684. And this is a publicly financed, community governed, financially self-renewing fund to build high-quality, permanent, affordable, publicly owned, community governed, mixed-income housing for low and middle-income Nashvilleans. Councilmember Evans would like to speak on it?
Yes, I added this from the People's Budget Coalition and the subsequent one really in support of what Councilmember Parker had investigated because I just wanted to add, like, let's have this conversation. And so I did no due diligence or anything like that. It's just like another layer of support because I'm really interested in between what the People's Budget requested and what Sean, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Parker put on his, kind of like what the appetite is, or could there be appetite for housing, kind of on either path and what does that look like? So that's all I'm going to say about it. If we can go to move forward.
Is there anyone that wants to speak specifically to this request? And if not, I hate to put you on the spot, but we have Kaye Bowers in the back and we have Andrew Kinks, Cranks, excuse me, in the back. Would you all like to just really briefly speak to what this request is? Andrew is with the People's Budget Coalition, Kaye does Affordable Housing in Nashville, and I know that they worked on this. So if y'all want to briefly just kind of catch the other councilmembers up to speed, I'll give y'all an opportunity to speak for a moment. If you could just come a little bit closer.
Thanks for the time and thanks, Councilmember Evans, for bringing this on to the list. As the summary says, it's basically a model that corresponds in many ways to what Councilmember Parker is proposing, where it's a bond financing situation where debt service is subsequently paid on it annually. This is based on models out of Maryland and Charlotte and Austin, maybe some other cities who have had great success around using bonds to finance housing, issuing low-interest loans to developers to create housing. All of the equity goes back in revolving kind of form, back into the fund to create more housing. And there would be causes around permanent affordability, or at least 99 years, whatever the law in Tennessee would be, and various other things that we're happy to talk about. But yeah, do you want to say more about it?
Yeah, so the ownership would rest in an entity that has the particular expertise to evaluate the financial viability of affordable housing initiatives. And so it's not, it doesn't do a broad, it wouldn't do a broad spectrum of work. Its purpose is to evaluate potential deals and put out RFPs to developers to build the units. And it manages the funds that are raised through the bond sale proceeds. And so it has a high level of, its staff would have a high level of expertise in that particular area of work. If that helps.
Thank you so very much. Does anyone have any questions that they wanted to lift up? Okay.
On the 540 for the fund, like, what is the 540? Is that primarily staff envisioned?
Yeah, so there, I can send that to you. We have it broken down as an executive director, a finance director, and administrator. And so they would be able to do everything in-house as opposed to contracting various services, underwriting, different things like that.
Three.
Three staff, right. And then some other costs, just like some side costs, but primarily, yeah, staff.
Office and, yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Thank y'all so much for joining us up here. Thank you, Councilmember Evans. The next is for housing production, $2.3 million from Councilmember Evans. Would you like to speak to that? Or is that the one that's in support of Councilmember Parker?
That's the one, yeah.
Okay, so Councilmember Parker, will you speak to the item?
I will, yes. And so y'all probably noticed we had a lot of folks come out and ask us about social housing at the public hearing. I think there's been a growing interest in this housing production model, and I think that especially with kind of uncertainty about some of the existing federal supports and state supports that are kind of funded through federal support for production of affordable housing, there's been a kind of renewed interest this year, given the state and federal circumstances. So as Mr. Crink said, this is to support mixed-income affordable housing. The idea behind this was essentially to issue about $30 million worth of debt, and we were thinking that $2.3 would be about the cost of servicing that debt annually. We actually, after talking with finance folks, I don't think that we need to have an operating budget allocation to support this model in this way. I did want to leave it in here for discussion, though, and I appreciate Councilmember Evans for kind of jumping on as well. And there's the question of the staff side, which is addressed with the previous one. We have now Director Hubbard's Housing Division. We have a finance department, the main finance department, who's looking into this. And the mayor's budget includes some resources to help us kind of get a model designed and off the ground. So while I would love to, in this budget, have all the budgeted positions for staff, I think that we've got a lot of kind of policy and legwork and funding designated already for consultants to help us with that, that we can accomplish a lot in the next six to nine months. But, you know, if we choose to put the funding for staff in the budget, I would certainly be happy about that as well. But I do think that we have the resources in the budget as it exists to make some significant progress. Again, I think there's a lot of policy work, a lot of work with Director Hubbard's Department, with finance to get through to make this a reality. I think at some point, if we're successful in this and it grows, we're absolutely going to have to have the dedicated division, the staff, you know, looking over this program. But I guess all that to say, I don't actually need this $2.3 million in the budget, but I do intend to work with colleagues, with the Housing Division, and with our community advocate partners in the coming year very closely to try and advance this housing production model.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember Parker. Is there any overlap with the Community Housing Fund proposal that we just heard about? Do you see any, like, overlap in those two things? Like, would that proposal conflict with the work that you're doing in any way? Would it help support it, help advance it?
No, I mean, it would only, it could only help to have, like, more resources within Metro dedicated to that. But I think that there's a, there's kind of a, there's resources in the budget already to support that work. So I think that's just kind of a question for you, for your substitute, and for us if there are amendments to that effect. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. Any comments, questions, concerns? All right, moving on to the next thing. We have Councilmember Swora with eviction right to counsel. Councilmember Swora is not here, but we also have already discussed eviction rights to counsel, so we'll just skip over to the next thing. Councilmember Swora, Our Place Nashville. We've already discussed Our Place Nashville. The next one is Councilmember Welsh, following the recommendations of the Unified Housing Strategy and a majesty report to use bonds to build high-quality, permanently affordable, publicly owned, community governed housing for low-to-middle income residents at $1 million. Councilmember Welsh, did you want to speak on that?
This is basically the same request that was made by CM Evans, but I thought that the request during the public hearing was for a million dollars, which is why I put a million in that. But this is the same request talking that Andrew and Kaye were talking about.
Okay, thank you. I think the overall request is about a million. It's about half a million for the Community Safety Fund, I mean, the Community Safety Plan, and about half a million for this housing fund. So that's probably where it was. Thanks, Councilmember Welsh. Councilmember Stiles, did you want to speak to this?
Not my question answered. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. The next item is eviction right to counsel from the Minority Caucus. Again, we've already talked about ERC. The next one is from the Women's Caucus, funds to assist in providing senior citizens with free home repairs, rebuild Nashville, and that's for $50,000. Did we already discuss rebuild Nashville?
No.
All right, Councilmember Stiles, would you like to speak to that?
I would. So this organization is currently helping many seniors in the North Nashville area, but they are getting ready to expand and start doing work countywide. So if it's, you know, mowing, it's roof repair, they are able to take requests and get out there, save seniors from being fined by Metro as well. So when seniors get a letter from codes, this is one of the organizations that codes sends out in a letter to say, hey, if you need assistance, give any of these organizations a call. And so this is saving seniors money, it's helping, it's making an investment in our seniors, quite frankly, that have already given a lot of their life and time to make the world a better place for us. So it's a good investment.
Thank you so much. Can we get someone from finance? Do we already give money to rebuild Nashville? Do y'all know? Okay, thanks. So we're looking up to see if we currently give any money to rebuild Nashville?
And I did speak with Director Kemp, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I did speak with Director Kemp about this and running this through the housing and planning.
Okay, thank you. I'm checking to see if we currently give them any money so that we can see if it's already being routed through another department. Councilmember?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm very familiar with rebuild Nashville, or, yeah, with rebuild Nashville as well. They do phenomenal work. So if we can support additional funding for them, they would put it to good use.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember, I'm forgetting everyone's names today. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Chair. So this, I know that we do fund rebuild with some Barnes funding each year, don't we? Is it Barnes?
I have never seen rebuild mentioned.
Okay.
I think we fund it, I do think we fund it through Barnes, but Councilmember Tooms, did you want to speak to that?
They've received Barnes funding in the past. They had a large, like, Bordeaux North Nashville focus, and then they've moved, still in the Bordeaux North Nashville area, but closer to, like, East Nashville, Madison area recently. But I don't know if they've been funded with, like, operating funds, but they've definitely received Barnes funding.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Councilmember Parker?
And then how does this, in the, and I believe the mayor's budget, there was like $1.7 million for MTHA repair. Is this, if we could maybe look to the administration staff to just speak to, like, what is funded in the mayor's budget in regards to this?
Ms. Wilson?
Happy to. And I'd say two things. One, I believe they may get funding through DHA. There's a grant program that does some of this rehab work. So if there's confusion, I think we need to confirm it, but there is usually some funding around this kind of rehabilitation work. And so if there's any pot I can imagine of Metro-ish money they would get from, that's where I would look through the history, and we can, we can, somebody can't put a question into MTHA about it. There is $1.75 million set aside in Unified Housing Strategy for the Anti-Displacement Initiative. And if you all take a look at that in the budget, you'll see the description seems to fairly well map to what you were describing as a use case for this, Councilmember Stiles, in terms of correcting codes violations so that older adults and other vulnerable populations can stay in their homes.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Councilmember?
Thank you. And I just want to say, like, they have done amazing work. They've done some work in my district, I mean, folks that are, would not have had a path forward to getting disentangled with codes issues, elderly folks who've been there for a very long time. So I'm super in favor of getting them resources they need to be effective. I just wasn't clear on the different buckets we have that are supporting that work right now. So that was all my questioning was. Very supportive.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Stiles?
Yes, so I guess, given Councilmember Parker's question, so with MTHA that has previously given some money to rebuild, is that what I'm understanding? So if this request was made, would that be the assumption that somehow they are unaware of this money through MTHA, that potentially they could be getting $50,000? Or is that what you're going to go look into and see?
I'll look at the history, I'll ask MTHA history or the Housing Division, but I'm not saying that that is necessarily adequate or the only source for them. I also wanted to, the Housing Division decided they needed additional funding, which is why they put that in the UHS, the Unified Housing Strategy, that Anti-Displacement Initiative. Yeah, I'm not seeing any current contractors to rebuild Nashville. For Metro. Just as I, Kristen Lee, I did it with MTHA and I went beyond on.
Maybe it is just for, like, operating support.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to clarify, Kristen, so the $1.7 million that's in the Unified Housing, UHS, that's designated for this type of work, based on the description, do you know if it's the intention of the Planning Commission to work with rebuild? Or are they planning on revamping or building something up from ground?
My understanding is they were going to work with MTHA on essentially creating a broader platform for grants, and that these would be grants out to service providers that an organization like Rebuild could compete for.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak on this? All right, seeing, we'll move to the next item on page 24. We have Public Library. Councilmember Ewing and Swora aren't here, so we'll skip them, and if they come, we'll come back to them. Councilmember Welsh, restore local funding, help make up federal funding, $3 million. Could you speak to that?
Yes, as you see that my fellow councilmembers before talked about, like, the NASS program is something that's going to be impacted by budget cuts across the board, the bookmobile, potentially library hours, things like that, to make sure that staffing can stay up in all these programs. Nothing takes the hint because losing all that money will definitely impact each one of our districts and what our constituents can do in our districts.
Is the, is a $3 million ask, ask, I'm trying to understand, is it encompassing several programs and that total is $3 million? Did libraries just x for a bucket of $3 million? Is $3 million just a number that you think would be helpful for them to get? Or I'm trying to-
Well, as I tried to do the math, but as you can see, my numbers have been off in the past couple days. As I did the math, it looked like $3 million is what had been removed from the budget this year because they weren't fully funded by us and what all these programs would cost. Yes, it would be the blanket covering all the programs so they could keep everything as-is, stasis, where we are now.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Stiles, did you have your hand up?
That was a mistake.
Okay. All right, did anyone else want to speak on the funding that request? Okay. Next, we have the Immigrant Caucus, increase programs in neighborhoods that do not have access to books and beyond. That's $190,600. Councilmember Prepti, would you like to speak on behalf of the caucus?
Yeah, I can do that. So, but I feel like it's relatively explanatory. So one of the, one of the vital things that NPO does is providing supplemental support to schools as well as within districts at local library branches. And so this particular request would just allow for continued access, especially as it relates to early childhood education, for areas of the county and other communities that traditionally have been underserved. So just making sure that we're allocating those resources to supplement.
Thank you so very much. Any questions on that? All right, seeing none, going to the next page, the Sheriff's Office, page 25. Councilmember Welsh, Sheriff's Department Budget Modification, mobile booking, courthouse, security, and tasers for $2.7 million. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, well, I think, I think we talked yesterday, and the mobile booking, I think, is in the budget. Seems like somebody, we were talking about something on that yesterday, and the mobile booking was in the budget. Did I miss speak on that?
Mr. Press, would you speak on it?
Aaron Pratt, my officer, that is correct. Mobile booking, there is actually funding in the current public health budget.
And then as far as the tasers, you know, I think anytime that we can give any law enforcement a different way than using a second to save a life, you know, right now, I mean, you're making split-second decisions out there, and I think they need something else than just a gun.
Thank you for that. Let me ask a clarifying question, and this might be probably for Ms. Wilson. I know Sheriff Hall said that they don't have any guns in the jail, right? This is, this sounds familiar to me, all right? Okay, Mr. Press is checking to see, yes. So are there sheriffs that are operating with guns outside of the jail?
What I recall from the budget or from the hearing, yes, his patrol officer is the sheriff, actually, or serving housing warrants and things like that, are armed and wants a non-lethal, a non-lethal option.
Okay.
An example is also some of the officers that do security upstairs. If you notice, most of them are caring.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just wanted some clarity on that because I remember them saying that no one in the jail has a gun, so it's good to clarify. Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on that item? All right, Councilmember?
Was that one of the items in the, in the sheriff's? Did the sheriff request tasers?
Yes.
Okay. Budget hearing.
I don't recall that.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Okay, seeing no one else, the next item is for the Minority Caucus, funding to provide a year of programming in the county jail once a month using 12 songwriters for $15,000. Vice Chair Tooms, would you like to speak to that?
I will let Councilwoman Stiles speak to it because this is something she's actually participated in.
Okay, Councilwoman Stiles?
Thank you very much, Chair. So the Beat of Life is a program that's currently running through the Sheriff's Department. There are 12 professional songwriters that come in, they visit youth women, also the male detention centers, and they do music therapy. They write songs in the morning and in the evening, or in the afternoon, they actually perform all those songs, and it's a form of music therapy. So with this additional $15,000, they would be able to bring on an additional 12 songwriters to do programming throughout the year. And the sheriff is very supportive of this program.
Thank you. And that request was from the Minority Caucus and the Women's Caucus. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on that? Okay, thank you so much. The next item is restore funding to Planned Parenthood for $500,000 from Councilmember Welsh. I sit on the Board of Planned Parenthood, so I'm not going to opine on this whatsoever, but I will give you the opportunity to speak, but I just wanted to put that on the record so that it was very clear that I was not going to give an opinion on whether we should or shouldn't do that. But Councilmember?
Well, we allocated money to Planned Parenthood last year, kind of in response to some of the things that were happening at the federal level and ultimately at the state level. Planned Parenthood is the number-one provider of primary care for women in the country, actually, and I believe that is also true here in Middle Tennessee. And I think that, given other funding cuts that are on the horizon that we have been told very specifically are coming to organizations like Planned Parenthood because of the reproductive health aspect of what they do, which is definitely not even the main thing that they do, it's one part of what they do. But given that we know that those things are coming down, I think it's going to be very, very important that women have access to primary care and reproductive health care in Planned Parenthood because it is cost-effective and readily available and people aren't turned away. So I think it's really important that we maintain their funding because I think that will have a very negative impact on the health of our community if we don't.
Thank you, Councilmember. Would anyone else like to speak on this? All right, Councilmember Tooms, you recognized?
Thank you, Chair. When was the last time, when did we provide that funding? That was a few years ago, wasn't it?
I believe it was a few years back, and I believe we extended the funding because I believe it was ARPA funds. Ms. Wiggins, do you remember what year that was, when we did funding for Planned Parenthood?
I don't think we used any ARPA funds for that.
It wasn't ARPA funds?
No. It was-
There was a reduction to the department's budgets and the budget was on, it was before 18. So it's like, it was one of those.
We received ARPA funds in 2021 prior to the FRS Act for 2020. In 2020, well, for the FY21 budget, there were several nonprofits whose funding was taken out of the normal operating budget and we funded it with the FRS Act. And Aaron was not one of them.
No, this wasn't that.
This was-
What Aaron's referencing, we, I think, whose budget voluntarily worked with departments to take a tiny sliver out of them to restore some funding that we heard about a loss that occurred for Planned Parenthood at the time.
Yeah, so we voted for, it was RS 2022-7, 1734, net appropriated $500,000 from Metro Government to Planned Parenthood. And then in 2023, we voted RS 2023-2206, and that was approving the grant contract. We had previously appropriated the funds to distribute safer sex, supply kids, family planning, counseling, birth control counseling, and birth control products. And the grant term began from June 6, 2023, to June 30, 2023. So to your answer, the last time was 2023.
That was it, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else want to discuss this? Okay, thank you so much. The next item is restore funding to Tennessee Justice Center for Community Outreach at Napier Suticum. That's $75,000. Councilmember Welsh, this is also going to Social Services, by the way. Councilmember, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, this has been a program that the Tennessee Justice Center has done, and the allocation that we have been giving them actually doesn't even cover their full cost. But they wouldn't be able to do the outreach that they do in the numbers that they do without it, and they very much need the funding to be able to continue this to connect people in Napier Suticum to healthcare and to insurance, things like that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to that? All right, seeing none, I'll go to the next item. Also, I received a question yesterday, just so y'all know, I am checking these off as we go to notate that we have discussed it. Someone thought that I was X-ing them, saying, like, I'm not giving anyone money for this stuff. So just so you know, for your own visual purposes, it's literally just to help keep me on track. All right, Councilmember, I'm like, X-ing while you're talking. All right, Councilmember Welsh, restore funding to safe gun storage program, $50,000. Could you speak to that?
Yes, given that we are getting more and more guns on our street and more and more ability to carry guns concealed and otherwise, I just think it's very important that we keep what I think has been a fairly successful program in teaching people about safe gun storage so that we can stop unintended gun violence and intended gun violence. It's an important project and very necessary for this budget money.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is that program currently with Social Services?
I can't remember who it was with.
Councilmember Evans?
I think it's Health, isn't it?
Is it Health?
I think so.
Okay. All right, thank you so very much. Would anyone else like to speak to that? Councilmember Prepti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarifying question, because I know that MMPD does provide some guidance for safe gun storage, so I know that they hand out gun locks to folks who request them. I guess my question is, knowing that there's all the time that there's interdepartmental cooperation, is MMPD, do we know if MMPD is part of the safe gun storage program or is it something completely separate than what MMPD does in providing those gun locks?
Thank you so much for that. Ms. Wilson, do you know that-
Sure. They have been collaborating, and there are a couple places that these gun locks come from. We receive donations sometimes from entities that are involved in gun manufacturing, and that's where some of those locks come from. The other place has been the state has been making funding available for this purpose. And so between MMPD and the Department of Public Health, they've been trying to place them in as many places as possible, particularly from the public health side and the clinics and with a focus on helping parents about utilizing them.
And Chair, I'll add to that in saying, I think that anything that we can do to allocate more resources towards safe gun storage and preventing gun violence, I think we should do. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this? All right, seeing none. Next, we are going to page 26. We have the contingency account. Councilmember Tooms, reduce the fund balance restoration in order to reduce the proposed GSD tax rate by five cents to 2.732. Councilmember Tooms, would you like to speak to this?
I will, Chair. This, well, one, it was hard to find dropdowns that even fit with this, what I was trying to do. And then, two, the calculation is off. So the fund balance, was it restoration that's in the budget? Because our revenues are going to be higher for fiscal year '26, to hit that 17%, our fund balance will be higher, right? And so that money is adding money to the fund balance so that we're at the 17%. And so if you take money away from the tax rate, it's not dollar-for-dollar out of that bucket of money. It's basically the incremental amount of the one cent that would go into fund balance. So my calculation is way off. So looking at it that way, I would have to find, to do this, I would have to find probably- So, looking at it that way, I would have to find, to do this, I would have to find probably around 30-ish million dollars to cut from parts of the budget. And I will say that this reduction, the five-cent reduction, I just did some scenarios based off folks' tax bills that I knew about, and saved like $18 for those folks. So, I hate to steal someone's saying, "The juice may not be worth the squeeze."
It's me. It's my saying. Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
So, the juice may not be worth the squeeze. I don't want to completely give up on it, just based off individual stories. I've heard of, you know, the financial impact to some residents. But I'm not ready to articulate what that is right now, because I would need to go back and redo my calculations.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember Tooms and Vice Chair Tooms. And just for the transparency of the viewing audience, as well as the committee, that's also something that I have been looking at, is trying to see if there is a way to reduce the rate. And my assessment is very similar to councilmember Tooms' assessment. When we look at trying to reduce the rate, we would have to make significant, I mean, significant cuts to departments, and so much of the department budget is our personnel. So, there will be significant cuts to departments, and the return on that investment will be very low. So, we're talking, you know, $15, $16, $18, $10 in some cases. So, while it would be a very minimum reduction to the bill that people are paying yearly, we would lose a significant amount of services. So, similar to what councilmember Tooms is saying, like, I am still open, I am still looking, and I'm dedicated and committed to looking in every nook and cranny. I know that finance has also done that. I know that the administration has also done that. I think the beauty of this process is that, in addition to what the administration does, we have the opportunity as a council to also put eyes on this process. So, you know, just for the viewing audience and for our voters and for our constituents to know, like, we are looking at every possible source. We are looking at every single thing. Those before us have already looked at every single thing, but we are continuing to look. At this time, it does not look like that may be an option, but I don't want to just completely rule it out. I want to keep an open mind and continue to look. So, councilmember Welsh and then councilmember Ellis.
I would actually like to argue in the other direction. I think that it would behoove us to raise the tax rate by two cents. I think that we were in this exact same position back in Megan Berry's administration, and by not raising the tax rate when we needed to, we found ourselves in our first term facing a really big fiscal cliff. I think that now is the time to do it, because with the reappraisal, it's going to just come at one thing. It's going to come, you're going to get your new bill, and you're going to get your new, whatever your tax bill is. And in the same vein as what you're speaking of, it's not going to increase enough to people, that is going to change the options that are available to people who are already going to see some sort of hardship with what the new tax increase will do in terms of programs that are available. But I think a two-cent increase on the money that that will bring in will actually positively impact our budget and allow us to maintain more of the things that we need, because we have to remember all of this is a trade-off. And as we have to cut, given other monies and funding that we're losing from the feds and all the rest, people are going to see also a negative impact from services that they're going potentially to lose, that we have, because we have to cut them in order to meet the basic needs of the city. So, I would actually argue in favor of increasing the tax rate by two cents, something to consider.
Thank you, councilmember Welsh. Councilmember Ellis.
So, I have a general question. Hopefully, someone can answer it. Do the personnel expenses for each department, those rates, is it based on us accepting the new pay plan?
Can you ask that question in a different way?
Yeah, so, the monies that are being allocated for our worker salaries within the departments, is that based on their current yearly rate? Or is it based on the caveat of the new pay plan?
The new pay plan is, the new pay plan is in the mayor's proposed budget. So, the budget for departments is contingent upon the new pay plan.
Got it. So, I'm trying to figure out if we.
Okay, and finance is saying, it's giving me the hint, not, but would you like to speak to?
Yeah, so we think the base budget of what that snapshot is, for current salary, filled positions, filled positions. And then, based upon the recommendation from the mayor's budget for the 1%, that's then added to total overall admin account. And then, when we do true-up the departments, we understand how much, like, if there's no percent or, you know, percentage drop, we do those final adjustments, and then we push those amounts to those departments based on that initial snapshot for filled positions.
Okay, so, I just wanted to follow up. So, if we, in theory, voted to refuse accepting that pay plan, and we wanted to give a COLA increase to folks, would that be, like, could you theoretically say the tax increase would cover that?
So, clarifying question, when you say to give a COLA, what do you mean? Because the current pay plan does have an across-the-board increase, so when you're using the language of COLA, what specifically are you asking?
I don't know if I agree with the way that across-the-board is being implied. So, I guess bare-bones, the amount of money that workers are taking home every two weeks, increasing that amount, net 6%.
So, you're saying, right now, however much money people are making to do.
Not based on the new pay plan.
Right, so today, the amount of money that people are making today, you're saying that you would like to increase them 6%.
Awesome.
So, the current pay plan actually increases them, the proposed pay plan increases them more than 6%, because it's looking at 7% to 8% increase in just the salary, plus it is giving them a 2% merit, plus it is giving them a 1% across the board. So, if you look at their current salary, and then you try to do a 6% on top of that, that is potentially less than what the new pay plan is proposing.
Thank you. That's good.
Is that correct information?
Absolutely, the lower tiers of the pay plan, right? Like, as you move up in pay, the, if you recall, graduates, that there are some that employees at the highest tiers of the pay plan aren't getting that level of increase. They're closer, I think, to the 2+1, that's kind of 3% at the highest end of the pay plan. But I would get HR to confirm this, it's just that I know it's intentionally progressive. So, at the bottom, you're looking at like 9% to 10% increases, and at the top, you're looking at, you know, like, that 2% to 3% range from one end to the other.
Okay.
For the, to clarify, that 1% to 2% is the increase in the, is the adjustment for the position, but it would still have the.
Correct. It wouldn't include the merit.
Right, so it would, so thank you for clarifying that. So, it would be the, it's still the position increase of the 1% to 2%, whatever that is, plus the 2% merit, plus the 1% across the board for the higher positions.
So, the workers that make the lowest money, how much of an increase are they getting based on this new pay plan? Is it the 9%?
The new pay plan, so it's not an exact amount for each individual person, but the new pay plan frontloads the pay, so that the median amount used to be, once you get to around step five in the pay plan, the new pay plan will give you that when you're closer to step three. So, it is front, it's like frontloading the pay, so that you are getting a bigger increase on the front end. But for the pay plan overall, you're looking at every range shifting up from seven, from an average of about 7% to 8% plus the 2% merits, plus the 1% across the board, which is why I'm specifically asking about the language of COLA, because some people are using the word COLA, but that means CPI, which is inflation. And CPI is not directly tied to COLA, so I want to make sure that we are using the same language when we're figuring out what the ask is.
I'm tracking, and so, 9% may seem like a lot, but when you factor in the property tax increase that's going to go into, likely go into effect, and their health insurance cost is going to go into effect, I'm trying to see it that if we were to propose that the tax rate, property tax rate, be more than that 2.8, if we could consider those additional monies being designated for the salary increase.
So, just being transparent with y'all, like I was yesterday, like I am with y'all, like, every single day, I have no appetite for increasing the tax rate on top of what it already is. Like, people will, this is.
From the 2.8, you don't.
From the proposed tax rate.
Okay.
So, if someone makes an amendment, they can make an amendment, and we can fight to the death on the floor, but I have no interest in raising the tax rate on top of what it already is. Like, for some people, this may be a small amount, but for some people, this is going to be impactful, and we have to raise taxes. We've raised them very infrequently up to this point. It's been very infrequent when we do do property tax adjustments, so we do have to make sure that we do it, because we have to provide and cover for our services. But I don't have any interest in raising it above what is already proposed. So, I do think that, and we can discuss the pay plan, we discussed it when they did the presentation, we will also have the opportunity to discuss it on third reading. I do think that the pay plan is very fair. I've also said that I am trying to get an additional 1% to match the civil service recommendation, so that they would get the 2% merit and the 2% across the board. We have to find consistency there, meaning, like, we have to cut somewhere to get to that, meaning that this budget will have to say that we're making some cuts in other places in order to pay the employees. So, I look for everyone's support, because I believe everyone agrees that we want to pay employees, and I look for everyone's support in trying to agree upon places to cut to get there.
Thank you. I didn't know that you were considering that in your substitute.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for saying that. I said it a couple of times, but I know different people are at different meetings, so I wanted the opportunity to put it out there again, so that everyone could hear it again. So, thank you for asking those questions. Did anyone else want to talk on the potential reduction? Okay, moving on to the next item, pay plan improvements. Councilmember Sorora wants to do a 1% increase, which I just, I've already said that it's my intent to try to find that. Councilmember Webb, to keep the yearly increase at 3% for civil service and metro employees. Would you like to speak to that? And I also have some numbers for that as well. So, do you want me to speak to it first, or would you like to speak to it?
You can, because I was going to meet, I spoke with, I don't see Ms. Darby in here. Is she, oh, there she is. Okay, got it. I need my glasses. We were going to, I'm going to meet with Shannon Hall next week, so we can address the whole pay plan situation. I want to see how she explains it, based on what I'm seeing, how other people are, we're going to kind of put some more finger numbers together. But go ahead and say what you're going to say, and then after Tuesday, I might have a different opinion.
Okay, no worries. So, what we can do as councilmembers, and Director Darby and I, met with HR on this pay plan for probably maybe almost two hours or so, and asked probably every single question that you could think of, of ways to like increase pay, and what we can and cannot do. What council can do is we can increase the, what we used to call COLA, now across-the-board. We can increase that, or we can reduce that. We do not, to my understanding, have the ability to change the steps. One changing step from, when I talk to Director Hall, is about $100,000. So, if we're going from 2% between the, if we're trying to go from 2% to 3%, yes, Vice Chair? I meant million, what did I say? $100,000? Oh, if it was $100,000, we would do it a bunch of times. $100 million, sorry, thank you for that. So, to go from 2% between the steps to go to 3% between the steps, it is an additional $100 million to do that. But also, it is my understanding that that would have to go back before civil service. I don't know that we have the ability to do that. What we have the ability to do is say that we're doing an additional 1% across the board, or lower it by 1%, or an additional 2%, or lower it by 2%. But it is my understanding that we don't have the ability to change the steps in that manner, but that is something that, you know, you can, when you talk to Director Hall, y'all can meet and discuss it.
And Mark, you didn't, I didn't get, did you send me the two videos of the two meetings?
I only have the one video, and I did not get a chance to send it to you, but I will.
And the pay plan, for anyone who wasn't here the very, no, the second day of the work sessions, we did have a pay plan presentation. So, if anyone has any questions about the pay plan, try saying it five times fast, but if you have questions about the pay plan, I would encourage you to go back on MNN or on YouTube to watch that session, and it was very informative, and it digs deep into what the pay plan looks like, and hopefully that will get questions answered, so. And the PowerPoint is on the sharepoint. Thank you, Director Darby. All right. Next one, councilmember Welsh, to increase metro pay plan to increase, to match the civil service recommendation for $14,000, $14 million, excuse me. Would you like to speak to that?
You've pretty much spoken to it.
Okay.
Just glad that that is something that's on the board, since this was, I think it was the first time that SEIU and FIRE and MNPD and everybody went all together to negotiate with civil service, so that they, that everybody from those diverse things, for the first time, came together and agreed to something, and I think it'd be really nice to be able to honor that, what they agreed to.
I do have a clarifying question, though, because my understanding is that civil service did the, my understanding is that by doing the additional 1%, we are getting them back to the civil service recommendation. Is this, and that's what you're wanting to do, right? Is the 1% to get them back? Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you so much for that. The next item is restore and increase funding for Build It Right Worker Compliance Board, $1 million. Councilmember Welsh, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, and I'm not sure this actually goes under the Community Safety Fund.
Okay.
My department's. Yeah, this is, I think this is a really, really good program, and I think it's very important for all of our workers that we make sure that conditions are right, contracts are right. It's just really important, and I think it makes a difference and shows a lot of respect to our workers on the ground. And I just think that it's something that should be a given, as opposed to something that we are negotiating every year. So, I think that my colleague, CM's Pulvita, has the same thing in another bucket somewhere else. But yes, I would like to increase that, so that we make sure that we are taking care of all of our workers on job sites.
Thank you so much. Would anybody like to speak to that? Councilmember Ellis and then Councilwoman Prepti.
No question is stupid, so what is Build It Right Worker Compliance?
So, last year, Councilwoman Pulvita, I think she worked on it more than a year, but she worked with various stakeholders to help create a worker compliance board, and we funded it in the budget last year at $300,000. And it's basically an entity that will help keep workers safe on metro sites. So, we're preempted from doing this outside of metro, but within metro, it would send someone to a site, and if they see something that is concerning, they could take it back to this board, and the board can make a determination of, you know, how they want to move forward, if they need, you know, additional, if they need to need additional training with that particular site to make sure that they're keeping workers safe. So, it was funded in the budget last year at $300,000. I don't know if it's in the mayor's budget this year, do we know?
It is, and just to be clear, that, this is focused on the contractors we use, and the safety of the contractors we use on site. We have separately in Metro HR a safety division that focuses on the safety for metro workers and metro sites, and then some departments, you know, think about like water, have their own dedicated safety employees, too. So, there's sort of three layers to think about, dedicated in departments, metro HR, which has three today in that division, and the mayor's budget increases it by another two, or a total of five. And then, then the Build It Right, which is exactly as Chair Ford described, and that has been, those funds have been moved into the budget for general services, which is where we place the board. So, they didn't get cut, they're still there, and they're moved over into that.
So, just as a quick follow-up, so, is this for, since it includes contractors, is this, like, who does the compliance? Is that under like codes, or who does the checks?
So, we created a board, and then we have three employee positions in general services that will, we have to be careful about wandering too far into tosha territory that isn't ours, but we think we found a really good spot working with law into ensuring things like best practices are utilized on the work sites of our contractors.
Okay, just one more thing. So, just to follow up, just to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, there is a home being built in my district, our district, and a neighbor wants to report the contractor that's doing that work and not treating the contractors properly, like a couple of different things. So, is that something that they would report to this compliance board?
No, this is only on metro sites. So, like, if metro is building something, like, if we're, I don't know, does it apply to schools? Or like, if we were building a new building, or, like, it's a metro site, not like just out in the community.
I see, okay.
We don't, and that's because we don't have the authority to do that. It's not that we don't have the desire, we just don't have the authority.
Okay.
Correct, and it, we're working with metro schools to make sure they're brought in. It's a little bit more complicated, because it's different contracting that they do, but we are in conversations about utilizing those three roles in that board to engage those schools' projects.
Lightview is almost finished, so we would love to have them out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. I saw Councilmember Evans and then Council- I saw Councilmember Evans and then Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification. The funding that they've originally received hasn't been spent yet, right? They don't have a director yet.
They have, they have a director.
Oh, they do.
And they have the two other roles, similar to some of the challenges that we went through with the Office of Youth Safety. Took us about actually the same timeline to develop the job descriptions and to go through the recruiting process. So there is a director and then there's actually some best practices support that we're looking to engage on this now too.
But is the question, has the $300,000 been spent? Or has any other, how much of the $300,000 has been spent? Was that the question?
Yeah, I guess that's part of it.
It's probably a very small amount, yes, it's there. And we continued it in the budget, we just moved it over. It was before the admin section, we moved it over to the general services budget. So it's still carrying forward.
Thank you. So it's in the budget at 300,000 currently?
The same amount as it was last year.
And I'll think it's time to just clarify yesterday's question for Office of Youth Safety. Currently there aren't much expenditures there. But because that is in the admin account, we're like, well, if they get on, they'll have those funds in the next 26 as a carry forward, potentially to use that 750, 730, whatever it is at the end of the day. Once we close up books and then we need like, we'll have the opportunity to use this year's funds in next year because it's part of the admin account in the community. I can't remember what section that is, but that's eligible for carry forward.
Thank you. That was, that was part of, thank you. All right, so OYS has their 750 and they have potentially 730 in the admin account. So we don't have to look at, I mean, we, okay, thank you, thank you. That's great news. All right. Councilmember, any other things on that one?
No, that was what I was gonna add.
Okay, thank you. And then restore funding, Councilmember Welsh, education resource, source support at 250,000?
I was gonna actually drop this, and again, I didn't know how to edit this. So I don't know, we can just, you can actually X this one out.
It's all good, no worries. Y'all, we not, so.
You can't edit, you can't do anything.
One, I tried to show a lot of grace, but also we know it's a new form, y'all. So it's all good, like y'all are way too hard on yourselves about messing up on this form. I promise it's okay, like everybody's stressed out, like it is okay.
Go back to paper.
All right. Contribution to Sister Cities, Immigrant Caucus, Minority Caucus, Councilmember Sora for $25,000. Jeff, would you, Councilmember Purpty, would you like to speak on it? For Immigrant Caucus and Councilwoman Tooms, would you like to speak on it for the Minority Caucus?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can touch on it briefly. So as we know, Sister Cities is one of the several programs that allows Nashville to really have its own international forum for cooperation and sort of partnership. We go on trips regularly with Sister Cities. And so just making sure that this organization has the resources that they need to continue that cooperation, they foster cooperation both intergovernmentally and nongovernmentally. By scholarships and programs for students to be able to go abroad and have those experiences that are really beneficial. So again, just wanting to make sure that we are investing in these entities that provide really, really important services, both for governmental purposes and in community purposes, but of past periods.
Minority Caucus is supportive of this. Sister Cities does make efforts to expand international travel opportunities to disadvantaged youth, which are often youth of color. So this is a small investment to provide, as Councilman Purpty said, to provide opportunities for individuals who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to take these types of trips.
Thank you, Councilmember Tooms. Did anyone else want to speak to that? All right, seeing none. Going on over to the next page, y'all, page 28. Film Initiatives, Councilmember Eastlick is not here, Councilmember Ewan's not here, Councilmember Coopens not here, Councilwoman Stiles, $45,000 to contribute music and entertainment economic development film initiatives. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes, I think I put it in the, I think I put it in the wrong place. I think it needs to go to the mayor's office since it's Office of the Nightmare is actually where this funding would go. This is the $45,000 to pay for free parking for musicians in town at 26 parking lots across the city. As we all know, we make a lot of money off of tourism and they are coming to see people play and perform and all that good stuff. And so with our installation of paid parking, which is great for our revenue sources, it is very difficult for musicians. And so in the last term, there was a conversation started about how the new parking was impacting musicians. And so they have a relationship with Metropolis where they have been willing to give them discounted rate. This money enables it so that the musicians get to park for free. So I think it's an investment we should make for creatives.
Thank you, Councilmember Stiles, Councilmember Parker.
Thanks, yeah. We have a venue in District Five that's had some really, we had some folks from the, come out to the public hearing, talk about the parking at Dark Matter. And what I was wondering is, so this, this is, this is the 45? So it's envisioned to go to Metropolis to support parking and the group's facilities?
So no, what will happen is if this becomes part of the budget, it would go to Benton's office and it would actually go to the, to NEVA, which is the Independent Venue Association that was created during the pandemic. If you remember that time, they got our funds so that our independent venues wouldn't close. So that's what it'd be funneled.
So it would be able to, so it would be able to support, because like out by Dark Matter, it's not Metropolis, it's our happy or whatever that group is that gets the vacant lots and commercializes them. So it would be able to go to like other providers as well?
So there's, it's 26 lots. So I think what the question becomes is if what, how NEVA makes the arrangement. It had been with Metropolis, so those funds are all gone. So now this is about starting a new affiliation with 26 lots across the board. And Dark Matter may be one of the ones that can benefit. I know Jamie was there the other night.
Yeah, I'm, it would make a lot more sense to me if it wasn't just with Metropolis because Metropolis only covers certain parts of town. Yeah, so that would, okay, thank you.
Give me two seconds and I can verify that. My understanding is that that is who it was in this last iteration where the funding has gone.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this one? So someone actually spoke with me a couple of weeks ago about this and I'll share with you all the same thing that I shared with them. My concern about this, I do think it's a good idea. I have not committed to whether or not I want to put this in a substitute. But my concern is we have metro employees that have to pay for parking, library employees have to pay for parking, and I think that is.
And the court.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. So for me, I do have some concern on if we're paying for somebody to park. And I know that we have worked out a program, like libraries has worked out a program where their employees are able to park at a reduced rate, but they are still having to make payments for parking. So my concern is paying, paying for parking for musicians when we are not paying for metro employees parking. So again, just wanted to put that out there since that is, that is something that I'm thinking through. I saw Councilmember Purpty and then Councilmember Benedict.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to sort of echo those concerns and want to make sure that we're doing what we can to not only improve our public transportation infrastructure, but it's sort of incentivizing its use. I know with musicians, it's sort of a different, monsters try and tackle like breaking down a drum set to take it on the bus.
Right, to take it on the bus, yeah.
But again, sort of just giving voice to that and recognizing that there are other metro employees that do have to, have to pay for parking and or seek reimbursement for parking. But wanting to make sure that we are, the investment of resources in expanding access to public transportation where baseballs.
Thank, thank you so much. And then I will give just a little bit more details about the program that may answer some of the questions that people have. So it's a musicians discount parking program. It's a partnership between the Office of Nightlife, Music Venue Alliance Nashville, the Musicians Union and Metropolis. Currently, the program offers a 60% discount code at 23 lots across Nashville, strategically located within walking distance of local working class independent venues. The how is playing a local independent stage within the Music Venue Alliance Nashville. Any musicians playing, excuse me, any musicians performing at an independent venue that's a member of the Music Venue Alliance Nashville, so you have to be a part of this organization. So any, anyone playing that's a part of Music Venue Alliance Nashville will be eligible for the discount. Member venues have a QR code available to share ahead of each show. Joining the Nashville Musicians Association, all active union members of the NMA are eligible to participate and receive a new code monthly. And the budget request is $45,000 to be allocated to the Office of Nightlife to form a new public-private partnership and create the free parking for local musicians participating in the musicians discount program. So that's based on a 2025 monthly usage. Metropolis will cover $40,000 in parking discounts this year at the current 60% discount. So they believe that if the program is, if it were to become free, that their program would double for next year. So that is to give more, more context to the information that was provided to me from Jamie Kent. And I saw Councilmember Benedict and then I think some, Councilmember Ellis and then Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Benedict?
Thank you, Chair. So actually, I had information about the program, so you actually gave a little bit more than what I was gonna give about what Nashville does. But I was looking, and I spoke with these folks after the hearing the other night about this. The city employees paying for parking was my number one concern. But additionally, I was looking at other cities with large music, large music venues. And no city has a program that's like what we have in Nashville today. I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't be helping our musicians here. I wish we could. But also from all the comparisons of all the cities, Austin, Chicago, New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, none of them have as robust a program as that partnership with Metropolis. So I really think this is something that's best handled in the private sector personally because that's how it's being done today. And I'd much rather focus on making sure our metro employees are not having to pay for parking before we, you know, reach out into the private sector and do this. I understand the need, I understand the concern. I just, that's, you know, we, this really is something that's unique to Nashville that is, that is negotiated out. And so I think if there's any ways that we could help make connections, that might be something that we could do as a city. But I don't think putting money towards this is really the best use of our funding when we have other needs for our own employees.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedict. Councilmember Ellis and then Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, like, I'm not against this, but I would just say, as you're considering your substitute, the state trial courts ask for, I think it was this $3,000, and it's actually funded in the mayor's budget to cover the metro workers that are gonna have to pay the, I think it's like $138 a month for parking, and that $3,000 allocation would cover that. So just don't pull that money for them.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. Councilmember Evans?
I was just gonna ask, like, kind of thinking about this because I really think both should be considered, really. But I was, I don't know on the parking fines, where do fines go? Because we have the 24-hour enforcement.
Does it go back to NDOT? It goes back to NDOT.
And what do they do with it?
In a special fund that's restricted to in uses, and I see Margaret nodding that she might have more to offer on the restrictions. So there's, there's some very restricted uses to which to use those.
That they place on it or we place on it?
Traffic and parking.
Okay.
Councilmember Parker?
On the fines, so for violations, actually, most of what you pay goes to the courts, to a $44 state administrative fee. So if you get a $75 ticket, only about 30, that's actually going to whatever funds can can be utilized for the transportation improvements allowed, allowable use.
Thank you, Councilmember Stiles.
Thank you. I think I, I hear all the concerns and I know on year six, I feel like the first three years we were having conversations of how we could potentially help with people's parking. First, we tried with the library and we got them the shuttle and I, I don't remember how that ended up phasing out now, but if we can figure out, I think it should be both and and not either or. I think we figure out how we can help employees, but also recognize that creatives are a lot of our bread and butter here. And we don't make a lot of investment into the creative community. We're about to, but we don't right now. So this is an opportunity where we can add to that before the office gets started and they start doing what they're doing and they're gonna start making requests next year. But this parking situation was very difficult for people. So it's a worthwhile investment.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, moving on on the list, next request from Councilwoman Stiles, $200,000. Replacing funding provided in last year's budget for the salary and benefits of the executive director and coordinator and tools for the office. The current amount will not cover the entirety of the director's salary, let alone the other necessary funding for this new department, Councilwoman Stiles.
So the budget book, and just to make sure that I wasn't crazy, I had someone else take a look at it. There was $100,000 and it said Music Entertainment Commission. There isn't anything in the budget book that says this initiative for film and music that was in the dropdown menu. So it looked like the funding was not there, that the 150 we had done last year is not in the budget book. The ordinance shows 250. So I just want to make sure, is there $250,000 still in this office, which was previously the Office of Music Film and Entertainment, which is no longer listed in the budget book because it's been renamed? Nobody told me. Can somebody tell me?
Director Pratt, is that a question you could answer or someone else from finance?
I'm looking at the ordinance right now and I do see the $250,000 to contribute music and entertainment economic development initiatives in the ordinance. Where are you referencing the budget book page? I would have to look at that specific page. I don't have that information at this present moment, but we can look at it. And it may be categorized differently, but I don't know what we're looking at. But the ordinance says there's $250,000 in the ordinance.
Right, and so that office previously was the Office of Music Film and Entertainment. So, and that's not listed in the budget book. It says economic incentives, so on and so forth. So I'm just making sure that that is the renaming of that office. Is that correct? Because otherwise, I don't really understand why we are renaming things and not telling people.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that because, based on, I don't have, I don't have that in.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Mr. Pratt. Chair, so we were talking about the funding that I was mentioning to you regarding the the money in the entertainment office budget. If the initiatives for film and music is what was previously the Office of Music Film and Entertainment for the last two years, then the $250,000 is there. If that is something else that I don't know about, then I still want this request. But in getting that answer, if the 250 is actually there and that's what the office is, then I don't, I don't have an additional request.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak to that? All right, seeing none on two page 30, election day and early vote and restore funding. Councilmember Welsh, this is a $2 million request?
Yeah, this is the number one I was gonna get rid of, but.
Okay, no worries. So we're, so no need for this, okay. All right, the next one is under nonprofit, the Contract and Compliance Board. It says $100,000, oh, to replace federal funds for the Contract and Compliance Board.
This is, if I may, this is from CM Sepulveda, and this is actually a typo. This should be for MC3.
Okay.
It was meant to be, it's a typo.
Okay, did you want to speak to that, Councilmember?
Councilwoman Welsh is correct, it's supposed to be for MC3.
Okay. Did you want to speak to MC3 or to the request?
I'll actually let you just, let you or Councilwoman Sora explain what MC3.
Councilwoman Sora, you want to speak to it?
Yes, this is a very good program that helps a lot of people in our community to be self-sufficient. And so they go through a training and this, in addition to the training, they get training and get to have with the jobs as well. And so it's a minimal investment on our part, but it does a lot of good. I've been to the graduation and one of us is an instructor there. We can't name which one, but it's a very good program. And we supported it last year. We're asking for it to be supported again because it's helping a lot of people in the community to learn a trade and get a job and be in the trade. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman Soror. Councilmember Cortez, you're recognized.
Did MC3 lose federal funding this year? Do we know?
They're losing a grant.
They're losing, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we know how much that is?
I'm not sure if it's federal. I don't.
Okay.
Probably not. Probably $100,000, but I don't know.
Thank you.
And so I'm not going to opine on this one, because I am the math instructor for that program, so I do not work for them in any full-time capacity, but a few times a year, I do instruct their class. So I am not going to opine on whether or not this should be anywhere, but I did wanna put that out on the record. Councilmember Tooms, you're recognized.
And this is a program that the minority caucus has been very supportive of. As Councilwoman Soror said, it gives career opportunities to folks who may not otherwise have them, exposes them to the trades, and it gives them apprenticeships and creates career paths for folks who, you know, everyone, everyone's not gonna go to college, or maybe they'll go at some other time in life, but it provides them career opportunities now and in a city that's increasingly becoming more expensive. You want folks to have opportunities to have access to career paths that will provide them a quality life.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman Benedict.
From my exposure with MC3, I think almost every council district is, has had someone in the MC3 program. So I think it's something that as district council members, we particularly should be supportive of because it's helping our constituents directly.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman Stiles.
Thank you, Chair. MC3 has the largest graduation class that it had at the graduation before last. And having been there and seen, like, 11 people graduate, and then going and seeing, like, 25 people come up and get their certificates, it's really impressive. It's a great alternative for people that don't wanna do a traditional trajectory and can help us apply our trade.
Did anyone else wanna speak on it? Councilwoman Ellis?
I excitingly, enthusiastically support this money. I would love to give them more. The career paths that they put some of these folks along with training, like, we have, even have electricians that are coming out of this program, and these are jobs that help them, you know, with their livelihoods. And so they need this money.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Cappan and Councilwoman Stiles?
Oh, I didn't have any.
Okay. Councilwoman Stiles?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, seeing, anyone else? All right, seeing no one else. The next page, on page 31, we've already discussed our place in Nashville, so we're gonna skip that. We already discussed the funding for Neighbor to Neighbor, so we're gonna skip that.
Yes. Yes. Now, because Women's Caucus sent this in, I do have the email showing that I sent it in, it's not here, so I wanna make sure that that's.
What's not here?
Neighbor to Neighbor, our support for Neighbor to Neighbor. I must have put it someplace else. And then I had some, I submitted three new items, and they're not on here, so I just bring them up, because I've got the, I sent them in, little wish list.
When we get through the whole wishes, I'll give you the opportunity. We still have some items that are on here that we haven't discussed yet. Councilwoman Soror?
I saw that I have, there's some new items in the front. Did you skip to them, or you gonna come back?
I'm coming back to them. Yep. So, hold on one second. Okay. So now that we have worked through the first 31 pages, we still have items that were on here new, so we're going back to the front, and we're only going through items that we have not already discussed. So if you supported an item, but someone else also supported it, and we already discussed it, we're not gonna discuss that item. But if there's a new item that has not been discussed, then we will discuss it. So Councilmember Ellis, did you wanna be recognized?
Yes. The, I guess I'm sort of panicking, because I wanted to make sure the Women's Caucus had submitted additional funding for the Weaver Domestic Violence Center. Have we talked about that already?
We've not talked about that. Okay. All right, thank you. So going back to page one, Councilmember Webb, fresh produce to outer areas of the city, $57,000.
We already discussed that.
Okay, sorry. That's the same one as the Councilwoman Stiles. That was the same one as the farmer's market, my apologies. It had a different name too, so I didn't realize it was the same request. All right.
Good choice, but.
All right, the next one, Councilmember Welsh, for $60,000 for a searchable database. We already discussed this one, but I did wanna give Finance and Councilmember Welsh the opportunity to give an update. So Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, this, it turns out that this is actually an initiative that Finance has been working with, with CM Benedict. And Mr. Pratt, if you could just give us a little bit of an update of where that stands and how it aligns to basically what I was requesting?
Yeah, so we, initially, what we're doing right now is a dashboard replicating the BAR report, the Budget Accountability Report, that's accessible right now with graphs. It doesn't go as in-depth as what, you know, this is intending, and, you know, we eventually would like to get there sometime, but currently, we do have a report five months on our expenditures by expenditure category in visual format as a very high-level overview. You would have to connect to the system to be able to drill down, but it doesn't have that capabilities. But we're working on additional components and working with Councilwoman President Benedict about getting there eventually.
Thank you so very much. Did anyone else wanna add to that?
Okay.
All right. The next item, we already discussed that first item. If I skip it, y'all, it just means we already discussed it, because I don't wanna have to go through each thing and say we already discussed this. All right, so the next item that has not been discussed is general services. Councilmember Stiles, $109,000 to address green space at the Southeast Community Center. Councilmember, I'll let you speak to it.
Thank you so very much. So the Southeast Community Center was built 10 years ago. The green space that is there was built on, it's sitting on some infrastructure that they, they can't really go very deep. So the dirt that they put on top is pretty much all weeds. So if we do any kind of weeding, it'll just turn to dirt. And we have a lot of, we have a lot of kids that play in the green space every day. So last year, I got the irrigation system fixed, so now all of the weeds, we, we used to be brown and green, and now it's all green, but it's green weeds. And so I spoke with Director Smith as we're investing in that site and revitalizing. This is one of the steps that I'd like to take in moving things forward. This basically creates a maintenance and a prevention system where the, there'd be seeding and aeration and some weed treatments, and come next year, it would actually look comparable to some of our parks that are really well-maintained. But it's not possible in the condition that it's in right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stiles. Did anyone else wanna speak to that? Councilmember Ellis?
I just wanna ask, can the Titans not donate some turf?
I, I don't want turf out in the green space. I mean, it's fine the way that is. The Titans have invested in another funding opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Prepti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would it be possible to utilize sort of, like, native meadow grasses instead of turf grass? Because I know that, to be able to, it's sort of less overhead to maintain sort of meadow kind of grasses and native grass instead of utilizing turf grass?
So the grass for this would be Bermuda, because they said it's very durable. But again, it's the, the cost upfront right now, maintenance is gonna be much less, but to actually dig up all of the green space and aerate, reseed come August, September, and then do some weed maintenance, so it would be ready for spring.
Thank you, Councilmember Hario.
I was just gonna add that I was, I was just gonna ask, the area that she is discussing is heavily used, and it can use that compared to some of the other parks. It does, it's not as appealing.
Thank you so very much. Did anyone else wanna add anything? All right, seeing none. The next request is on page five. Councilmember Webb, spay and neuter more animals, $40,000. Would you like to speak to that?
That's not new.
It says new on the paper.
We talked about it yesterday.
Okay.
Probably because it's under. Or the day before.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Soror, and the Immigrant Caucus, $60,000 museum across the city study, or study for a national black history museum. Councilmember Soror?
This is one of the traumatic conversations of mine, of my council time. Everybody who doesn't know, know the story of the Morris Building, and I think that story is one where I'll, I still believe that African-American community is exploited. The building was supposed to sell, be sold for 12 million. The pastors of this community went and negotiated that price down to 6 million, and, but just because we couldn't find the money to do it, somebody swooped in, bought it for 6 million, turned around and sold it for 9 million. It's still very traumatic to talk about. There was nothing illegal about it, but I think it's morally wrong. So since then, we've been trying to figure out what we want to do, and so a couple of people in the community have been talking about different sites. And so last year, Director Walker with the historical commission was going to do a study to look at all the different locations and try to help us figure out what would be a good place for an African-American history museum. If you all remember those that were here during the workshop last year, I actually had a request for 60,000 for this study. The council member Quinn Segal said there was a study already done, and so we stopped it then and we didn't do anything. But when I went and looked at that study that she was referring to by parks, it was not this same study. Parks had looked at Morris Building and some other building, but this one is actually looking at different locations across town, taking from all the community members. A lot of people want, there's so many people that want African-American history museum, and different people want in different places. But this is a study by the historical commission to look at all the various sites across town and to be able to give us a good idea of what's a good location and they'll start talking about what the cost is. So since we missed it last year, I hope that we're able to at least get this underway. And while the study is going on, yes, all the stakeholders will be coming, everybody that is said museum, to be able to look at that. So I, I hope that we can find the money and I can put this trauma.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Soror. Councilmember Stiles?
Thank you very much. I'm in support of this study. It certainly has been a saga dealing with this, losing this building. There are some things that were left out of that story, however. We certainly lost it at the beginning of this term, and we definitely need it. There's so much history, and you hear whispers of it in conversations, but there's no place that you can actually see things on display. And much like we have the National African-American, you know, music museum, we need a civil rights history, really, museum, because it really started here, it started here with this. So this study is the first step. I'm 100% supportive.
Thank you. Did anyone else wanna speak to this? Councilmember Ellis?
I think I'm preemptive to acquire when I say this, but we all know on the federal level, black history is being erased, and also, some of the progress that we made is being reversed. So this couldn't come at a more important time to get this funded.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else, Councilwoman Soror?
I wanna add something, just to bring it home for folks, that, you know, we're naming street and naming building, but some of these people are passing away. And I remember when King Orleans passed away, one of the stories that was being told is that the plates that they used to feed him in prison, he had it. And so now that he's passed away, where does that go? They all have moments in history and mementos that we're losing, and these people are, we lost another one last year, Mr. Odom passed away. So it's just, I think it's about time we collect all of these artifacts and we're able to tell our story to the next generation. So this is a first, a step in the right direction. I hope we can at least start, start that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benedict.
Thank you, Chair. From, it was a huge disappointment when our, when our colleagues did not support buying the Morris Memorial Building. This is needed, and we need to do it as soon as possible. I hope that it's supported by the budget chair and by the council. Thanks.
Thank you. Did anyone, Councilmember Webb, is your hand up?
Councilwoman Webb.
Okay, I guess not. All right, seeing no one else, the next item. Sorry, y'all, they're flipping away here. The next item is page 10, Councilmember Stiles with NDOT, funding for the purchase, yeah, we are dick community second plan. The next item is NDOT, Councilwoman Stiles, purchase of a litter truck that's able to vacuum trash from along the road with 14-foot hose, $350,000. Councilwoman Stiles, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I'm really excited about this truck. Hate trash so much. So I had a demonstration this week with NDOT, and this truck, it has this, like, big vacuum hose, and it can go along the curb and just suck up trash. It just sucks up bags, like, the garbage bag-sized bags of trash. So for me, people put their trash bags on the back of their car coming out of an apartment complex, and they forget about it, and then it's like splat in the ground. This truck would be awesome. They're buying one, they have enough for one right now, but I thought, how are we all gonna use that truck? And I'm gonna be trying to spend most of this time in District 32. So I thought we could maybe try and squeeze a truck in. But I also wanna know, should I use this for CIB, or can I use it now? So I guess, I don't know who that's directed to.
Finance, could that be through, like, 4% or any other, any other mechanisms outside the operating budget?
Yeah, Aaron Pratt, Budget Officer, looking at the, looking at the amount, yes, 4%, it's a large 4%. But it seems to be on, on par.
Thank you.
You're not saying that it will be, you're saying it could be, right?
Look, hope springs eternal. That's how I live, okay?
No worries. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that we were, we were clear on that. All right, the next request, from Councilmember Benedict, it's on page 15. It's fully staffed, Shelby Park Golf Course, four positions, $403,000. Councilmember, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. So Shelby Golf Course is 100 years old, and last year, there was a more than $2 million restoration project. This golf course serves not only East Nashville Districts 5, 6, and 7, but also the entire downtown area that comes over to Shelby Park. The Department, Director Odom submitted on her, her budget submission, included staffing and resources to support Shelby Golf Course. It was not funded by the mayor. This request would fund that. And in their request, and as I spoke with Director Odom about this, it requests the required funding to maintain the quality of those renovations, and it increases staff, resources, and utilities to enhance the products and services, so that it will bring it up to the level of other metro golf courses. An example are the new Turf Eagle Greens that provide a better putting surface. We wanna make sure that that $2 million investment that we made last year stays on level with, you know, stays as improved as it, as we should do. And so these, it actually is three positions, totally 403,000. I accidentally typed in four, it's, because there's 40, 403,400, and so I had four in my head, but it's three positions at 400,000. And so this is something that I think that would really be helpful for Shelby Golf Course. We should, we should have it fully staffed if we're gonna invest a couple million bucks into its improvement.
Thank you, Councilwoman Prepti. Councilmember Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And these are three FTEs.
That's right.
And then it, that includes both salary and benefits.
That's right.
Thank you. That was your question too, Councilmember Webb?
Yeah, because I thought it seemed high, yeah, but it includes, yeah.
Yep, it's three FTEs, three headcount, so total expense for fiscal year '26, 403,400 is what Director Odom had in her budget request.
Thank you. And Councilmember Stiles, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I was just gonna say, I'm supportive. We have our parks and golf courses, and they, everybody needs to be on the same level. We should not be saying that certain golf courses or certain parks look better than others. We should all be operating at the same level. So let's make the investment.
And Councilmember, you may have already said this, and my apologies, I was confirmed with Director Darby about something, so my apologies if I missed it. Is that going to bring any additional revenue in to Shelby Parks?
So we actually asked Mr. Roten to gather information from golf courses around the city. It became a larger ask than the vice mayor asked for some information about golf courses specific to the golf course requests, both, the two requests that were in the budget. So there's a lot of data that we've asked Mr. Roten to provide that would include that. Some of the challenges are that they switched to a new system, so, and as well as the COVID year, and so the revenue and the activity per golf course is hard to measure. So I think that the right measurement for this would be, are the courses fully staffed or not fully staffed? And to me, I think that this one shows it's significantly understaffed with, I mean, they only have, I think there's seven, six employees today, and so if they could get the three more that it takes to maintain the investment we made last year, I think that, you know, that would be tremendous for that course and for the patrons of the course.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
Well, I was just wondering, you know, Joey had a good point, everybody ought to be able to have a nice golf course. Can I put in a new request for the North Side, District 10 and 1, to get a golf course?
To get a whole golf course?
Can I get a dog park first? Just a dog park.
I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you, Councilmember Webb.
Isn't Justin Timberlake doing something tonight? Your direction?
Yeah, we won't be able to afford to go there.
Councilmember, Councilmember Prepti, and then Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add to this, this course, I think one of the things that we could potentially do in the future to maximize revenues for our metro golf courses is create, initiating a system online to, a few times, because right now, to be able to book a tee time, you've got to either go, show up in person or call ahead, which is a fine system, but I think being able to.
It's a fine system?
It, it's fine. But I, I think that that would be a way that we can also maximize revenues for parks, but.
Thank you.
To that end.
Councilmember, sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Ellis, and then Councilmember Benedict.
I just wanted to add, Metro Parks actually has a request in their budget to update their reservation systems, because even when trying to book the facility for an event, actually I want to speak to this because golf is becoming, or is already a more popular thing, and so this can actually bring in revenue for us by, you know, making it more appealing for folks to attend.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Benedict?
She hit my first point, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on this one? All right, thank you so much. The next item, we skipped, Councilmember Kimbrough had an item, but she's not here, so we skipped it.
What is it? I might can speak on it for her.
Okay, page 14, Oasis Center Youth Emergency Shelter, the only emergency shelter in Middle Tennessee specifically serving runaway and homeless children, excuse me, youth ages 13 to 17, safe bed, it provides safe bed, trauma-informed care, meals, counseling, and educational services at no charge, that's $250,000, Councilmember, to go to the Office of Homeless Services. Councilmember Webb, would you like to speak to this?
This is another thing that's dear to my bestie's heart, and that is.
Aw, that was sweet. Aw.
And I got to support her and know that, well, and plus the youth, you know, this is, parenting is hard just for people that have good parenting skills. And then there's some people that don't even have a parent, and these people run away, and they don't, the parent's not at home. I think that's part of the problem with our education system, where they don't get good parenting at home. So I think this should be on everybody's priority list because I think we can make a difference in somebody's life right here.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember. Did anyone else? Councilmember Cortez?
Yeah, I'm supportive of this as well. Do we know how the funds would be used?
I don't know that we have that information. We could, we could likely get that information. Councilmember Ellis, and then Councilmember Stiles?
I just wanted to add, I believe that the Oasis Center is recently hired or is still looking for a new executive director. So I think this would actually sort of jumpstart them with the fundraising efforts that they're going to have to pick up, given where we are federally. So I would highly recommend that you include this in your substitute for the kids.
Thank you. Councilmember Stiles?
I was going to say I support it as well, but to Councilmember Cortez's point, everything that's listed here, that is where the, that's where the money goes. So when the kids come in at night, it's their beds, it's their food, it's the activities, it's everything. It's that whole program.
Yeah, I thought you were asking more like specifically for the budget breakdown, which we ask sometimes for nonprofits, well, not sometimes, we ask for nonprofits to provide that more specific breakdown of the information. Councilmember Prepti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also support this. I just had a question as to, does Oasis Center also provide assistance for transporting the youth that they serve to and from school?
Oasis Center, would you like to address that? I don't know, Councilmember Prepti. We can ask someone to get that information for you, but we don't, I don't have that information. And Councilmember Kimbrough isn't here, and Oasis Center isn't here. All right, not seeing nothing else on this one. Councilmember Ewing isn't here, Councilmember Sora, looks like she stepped out. I believe we have now addressed the whole packet. I know Councilmembers Stiles wanted to address something that was not in the packet, and then if Councilmember Sora makes it back in, we will address her request. So Councilmember Stiles, you're recognized.
So we've covered the ones that I did add previously, so the truck and the green space. And I've asked Director Reed to look into my other requests. I think I need to get more information on that and then get back to you.
Okay, perfect. We'll get back to Director Darby. All righty, seeing no one else, we're going to wrap up this session for today, everyone. Thank you all so much for your participation. Remember, next week, the next budget session is on the 10th. Yesterday, I said we were going to do it upstairs in the chamber. I was just informed we have to keep it down here for it to be the work session. So it will be next week on Tuesday at 4:00, and we have to end at about 4:50 because we have to get upstairs for the committee meeting at 5:00 for those of us that are on the committees that are meeting on Tuesday. We will talk about our funding sources at that particular meeting. We have an optional meeting scheduled for the next day. I'm going to work with Director Darby to determine if that meeting is also necessary. We may actually finish discussing funding sources on the 10th, so we may not have that optional meeting, but I'll work with Director Darby. It will be noticed. Y'all, y'all have already, it is noticed already. So if we need to cancel that meeting, we'll make sure to let you all know, but as of right now, it has already been noticed. And with that, thank you all so much for your time, and I hope y'all have a great day. Meeting adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.